I pledge allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Eels?
Here.
Brazil?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Dodger?
Was it?
Schwab?
Here.
Okay, next is approval of agenda. So, right off the bat, there are, um, there needs to be two changes. First would be, um, adding, uh, the adoption of the Cresson Social Studies Curriculum. And that, I suggest that we put, uh, under, um...
Three?
No, under, where was I put that there?
New Business?
Yeah, right under New Business, under B, before Consent Agenda.
Where, please?
Social Studies. I think that's where we said it. Okay.
Where?
Right, uh, starting under New Business.
You can do one, under B. Under B.
Yeah.
Under B?
Yeah, B.
Oh, Big B? Big B.
Yeah, Big B, but New B, New Business. Okay? And then, the second amendment would be to put in, uh, an executive session. And that executive session would be twenty-four dash six dash four zero two, and in parentheses, four C. Four G. And that would be put under, directly under, uh, Business Meeting before Old Business A. And the reason being would be that Tanya and Dan would be present. That would be directly under, uh, uh, it would be directly under eight, Business Meeting.
Eight.
Okay? Under numeral eight. Yeah, just before Old Business. Between eight and A.
I'd like to propose since Marcy's here and can speak to the MOU that we've been talking about for a couple of months, if she could also do the update on Bosie's and from Item C at the same time, then she could go.
And putting that where?
Move the update on Bosie's up to Item A two. Where we're talking about the MOU, because she's gonna have questions that she can answer maybe. And then she doesn't have to hang out all day and watch us.
So, Donna, I'm not...
Okay, Item C one.
Oh, I get it, I see.
Move it up to A two.
New, okay, I get it.
Okay.
Okay, so, this would be Marcy.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else want to add? Anybody want to delete? Yeah, exactly. Okay. So, uh, may I have a motion, please?
I will move that we, um, add the, um, agenda items that we have added, and go for it. So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Eels?
Aye.
Brazil? Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay.
For public participation, I have Chris Riley, who wants to present to you the Cresson Social Studies real quick.
Okay. So, before we go forward, is our Dan and Tanya recipients of the letter?
Yes, they have it.
Okay. Okay, so...
Oh, will you be Dana?
You'll be Dana. Oh, you're not Dana.
Hi, everyone, you know me, you've seen me.
Yes. And, and thank you so much for your participation in graduation. And again, and your daughter, that you did a excellent job, so...
So nerve-wracking, I don't know how to do it every time.
I know, emotional, yes.
Thank you, yeah. Um, I'm here, um, because I would like to present to you guys, um, what the elementary staff, as well as the District Accountability Committee has decided to ask you to approve, um, for the elementary social studies curriculum. So they too looked at all of the same things that we sent you, with all the links that we sent you, um, that I hope that you perused and you took a look at. Uh, but this is the choice that they have made. So they have chosen McGraw-Hill. It's called the Impact. Uh, and they have the one that's specifically for Colorado that we'll be buying, so it's Colorado Impact. I don't have as great of a presentation as we had when the high school junior high was here, but I didn't expect, um, our teachers to come here on their summer break. So I am here doing the stuff for them. I wanted to give you a couple of, um, a little bit of information about this. We will be purchasing all, everything that you see here. Um, these are consumables, so the consumable pieces will come every year and are included in the cost. For six years. So this curriculum we will use for six years. None of the curriculums that we took a look at current, meet the current standards that were just brought down. So we were unlucky in that way, where we were lucky at a junior high, high school level, we were not lucky in the elementary level. And none of the ones that I contacted are currently writing a new curriculum to include those new standards. So the teachers are aware, fully aware, that they will have things that they will have to supplement, um, to meet some of those standards, that the new standards that are not being met. The, this was written and, and delivered, uh, available for purchase in 2020. So...
The others we looked at were 2018 or 2019?
Yeah, 2018, um, and so they're, they're, one of the newer ones, um, and they do hit the majority of the standards. Um, I do have some, the teachers, they did a training on May fifteenth, um, with an actual, an actual person from McGraw-Hill. Um, they were asked to fill out these papers, and so I thought I would read to you guys just a couple of the highlights of the things that they liked about this program. Um, they liked that it had inquiry-based projects.
Which is what, um, the junior senior and I was talking about in their presentation, that exact same thing.
Project-based learning, competency-based learning are where we're headed, so that's, that's really great. Um, also it integrates other subjects, English language, it also has a non-English section that we can access. Um, it integrates into Google Classroom, which is what we currently use, um, as teachers to communicate with our students in multiple ways. Um, it follows the same structure as Wonders, which is the reading program, um, and also the online science program that we currently have, so that feels, um, familiar, they said, to the teachers and hopefully to the students. It has a lot of Colorado content, so there are some specific Colorado things, of course, you know, we're, we're living in it every single day. So it's so great to live here anyway, uh, but it's nice to have some other Colorado content that is accessible. Um, it also has virtual field trips. Uh, I know that when I taught fourth grade, we went on a gazillion field trips every year, which is great because we're living in it. But I know that those field trips have slowed down due to money and all those types of things. So it does have virtual field trips. Super engaging activities for kids, current events that are updated monthly. So if, um, that's all, um, updated automatically for the teachers. Um, one of the biggest things I heard over and over was that there's a flexibility piece to this, um, this curriculum. So if you only, if you have forty-five minutes to teach, it, it has something you can do for forty-five minutes. If you have thirty minutes, it, it has something just for thirty. If you have fifteen minutes, so if you have to cut down, it, it gives you those possibilities, which is nice, because some days you don't get to, you don't get forty-five minutes for social studies. So I saw that a couple of times in here. It says, it also has a social emotional learning component, which looks like it might mesh with Amy's mindfulness lessons, as well as the restorative justice practices that we are working to implement. So those were the positives, um, that they had. The biggest negative that I saw was that there are a lot of pieces. So you can see how many pieces there are. As a teacher, when you don't have a lot of time, sometimes you can feel a little bit overwhelmed, thinking that you have to hit everything in here. But that comes with time, too. After you've taught it a year or two, you're much more familiar with what you can do, what you can get through. So that, that's what I, that's what I had for you today, I wanted you to take a look at it.
I will add, um, you know, a lot of the things, almost, almost everything that Cody and, um...
Liam?
Liam presented at the last board meeting as the positives for the social studies are echoed by the teachers as the positives for the social studies. It integrates with Google Classroom already, it's got the online piece that gets automatically updated. Um, one of the big pluses is as we were looking at this, we're like, wait a minute, fourth grade? Fourth grade is Colorado history, that's fourth grade history. Um, and when, in the book, it had nothing, however, that's because the books are for, uh, they're national publication, but all of the Colorado history stuff is available online. So it is right there for the teachers, they can print it, they can use it digitally, wherever they want to do, and it can be in their consumables.
But also the training that they, you guys got was the Colorado-specific training.
Yes.
And I, and we will be buying the Colorado-specific content, so...
So, um, the other thing was the automatic updates monthly. So, um, if there's something in the current events that's happening, that the kids are hearing about, we're going to get it on a regular basis in text at their level. So we're going to be getting it at, with, at their level appropriate for whatever age group we're looking at. The other thing is that although this is 2020 and not as recent as the other one, right now, we have no continuous curriculum for social studies in the elementary school at all. We have piecemeal, we have nineteen ninety-nine, we have nineteen ninety-eight.
Eighty-five.
Uh, nineteen eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
That's a little bit of history that's happened since then. So... So we really, we don't have any continuity in scope and sequence right now. So although this does, as any curriculum does, mean we have to supplement, there's no such thing as a perfect curriculum. This is a lot less supplementing than we have to make it all up, because there is nothing for kindergarten, there is nothing currently for first grade, so...
And as a teacher, it's really nice to have a curriculum to work from.
Sure.
Um, you, you tend to want to supplement on your own anyway, but it's really, really important, I think. I, I love that we're doing, um, you know, we have something for K through five, and we have something from six to twelve. Um, it, I just like that continuity and the familiarity that they'll have.
The secondary, with the program the secondary got, because it's the same type of thing, we can even help of this very nicely.
Well, and that was my question, was that, um, when I was looking at everything, it, it appeared to me anyways that the curriculum that the, the secondary school got had, had a curriculum for the, um, primary school.
It did, and they looked at it.
What was the drawback on that?
They didn't like it, they didn't like, um, so they had three different ones to choose, to choose from, Savis, which is one of the high schools. Uh, McGraw-Hill, and then they also had one called, it used to be Nystrom, but now it's socialstudies.com. Um, and they got, we got samples from all three, um, and they just, this is, oh, this was the most popular one. Uh, every one except for one teacher that spoke, that I spoke to preferred this one.
The consumables and the items that actually went in the kids' hands were not as engaging. Um, there was a much heavier online piece than have something in front of the kids' physical piece on that one. And I think a lot of that is what the teachers didn't like. Were really conscious of, um, screen time.
I think for junior, senior high, that's a good piece.
Right.
To have that online piece, kids are more online, they're more comfortable, they're able to access. I know Savis had really fantastic, easily accessible things, like the Constitution, and everything is linked online, easy access, and that's great. But for the younger kids I've taught over there, um, you know, hands-on things, things they can touch, get on the floor, build, um, those are the things where they tend to remember more. So that, that could, that could be why.
I think it's easier for parents to engage with their kids if they have...
Yes.
So...
I don't like online, I, I prefer to learn with my hands. Um, but there is a great online piece with this as well. So if they are remote, um, and, and a kid forgets their, um, book at school, it's easily acce, the teacher can get on and send it to them through Google Classroom, or they can access it if they have, I believe, I wasn't there for that training, but I believe that the kids can access this themselves, so they could get on and get to that, um, lesson and be able to see it even if they forgot their notebook.
And it's just, you know, with littles, there are no first graders trying to access things online as in incredibly time-consuming. And by the time you get all the kids on, the ones that got on first, you've lost them. Because this one over here, they still can't spell their name and can't log on, it's taking them twenty minutes, and these kids have been logged on, they're doing really creative things. So, um, the actual physical print piece is much better for someone, for generally every day in the lower grades.
And I think that's why we weren't able, I would, I would have loved to have a K-12, um, as we were able to do with math, but I, but I, I think in this case, it just wasn't meant to be, uh, it's just too different, um, for, for us to be able to do that. But we did get K-5, and then we got 612.
And it's the same online platform that we use for, um, part of our reading curriculum and for all of our science curriculum. So it'll be familiar for the kids when we do get them to take, get logged on in less than twenty minutes.
So traditionally... Traditionally, fourth grade has been, uh, really focused on Coloratic history. Will that continue to be the tradition?
Yes, and...
We have no choice on that, that's the standard.
Okay, okay.
That'll stay the same, but all the other grades, because we're gonna be buying the Colorado Impact, so this is just the Impact, but they have a Colorado Impact, um, there'll be more of Colorado in even the other grades.
Okay, then that's good.
Yeah, but Colorado history is fourth grade standards.
Okay.
Okay.
Is, this is available now, how soon will it be implemented, next season?
Um, I'm gonna order it as soon as you guys say yes. Um, we had to wait to, for budget, budgeting purposes, to see what this, this is, have you approve it, see how much the high schools cost and the elementary's cost together, make what we can buy. So Tammy and I are meeting tomorrow, actually, um, upon you, your approval, to, um, get those things ordered and look at the budget, make sure we get as much as we can. But elementary will be getting this entire kit, they're getting the full kit.
So what is the cost projections?
Um, for this one, it's around twelve thousand. That's K through five. Uh, junior, senior high is more expensive, it's about nineteen thousand for everything that we have to get. And then we do have some additional pieces that we would like to get, but Tammy and I will be duking that out tomorrow. I'm just kidding, we're not gonna dupe it out. But we're gonna try, we're gonna, we're gonna try to see if there's a couple of other things we could get for the high school, middle school, but we'll be looking at budgets tomorrow. Yep, that is the very nice thing about this, is that, um, those renewal costs are in, so you don't have to. Now, after six years, I'm assuming they will have something written, but let's say they don't after six years, then all you have to buy are the consumables.
They have a whole different country.
Yeah. You can buy, you can continue to buy consumables even after you have paid for six years, you just have to pay those. So that would go back to the budget of, of buying another year of consumables or not, how many other years you like to buy. But the way things were moving, I mean, we went twenty-something, thirty-something years since we've had our curriculum, but, um, I know our budget, we look at, uh, different, uh, we have a four-year cycle, so English, social studies, math, and science, so every four years we're looking, um, and seeing what we need, if we need an updated curriculum, or if we can hang with it. So if you come across math, and, um, we still like the program, and it's time for new math curriculum, um, but we don't want new curriculum, and we just have to buy more consumables, then we do have that same budget for that.
Right, and to be fair, it's not like we haven't looked at social studies curriculum before. Um, we've looked, but we...
For years.
There, there was nothing. So the fact that we found something that is even close and in the ballpark, as well in the ballpark, is, is pretty astounding, and a positive note. Gary Lewis, I think on the last committee when we looked at social studies, and there just was nothing out there.
Yeah, I, even, we went to some conferences, and I looked and found some books, and it was like...
We would have to supplement fifty percent, and at that point...
Not worth it. Yeah, and this is re, and I liked them all, I, I thought they all were good, I looked at them all. It's nice to have options. So, um, that's, that's my not as good as Liam and Cody's presentation, but it's what it is. Um, and so if you guys have any other questions, um, otherwise, I will check in with Tammy tomorrow to see whether or not you adopt this. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you next year for something.
They were pretty tough actually, though.
I know.
It'd be hard to beat them.
Train those boys right now, I'm just kidding. All right, thank you guys for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
You have to.
Thanks for putting all that time into it.
I, I also wanted to, graduation, I thought, was very nicely done by you guys, and they have, and it was, everything was really nice.
Yeah, the families I heard from were just...
It was good, I felt it.
I'm, I'm wondering if you will do me a favor, Chris? Trying to mix, uh, a couple of things. If you would take a look at these two, uh, surveys and...
Oh, of course.
Give me a callback, or, or, it, there's some instructions on there.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course, thank you guys for your time, thanks.
Thank you.
Happy summer.
Okay, so then, uh, moving on, um, the reports, superintendent, principals, and department reports.
Um, well, any, any questions from the board regarding my superintendent's report for the month?
No, but I really expected that there would be an amen at the end of it.
Eh, but I, I forgot to add it on, I was thinking it, though. Sorry, I'm...
Two successes, I was kind of like, oh, I'm kidding. And, I'm just kidding. Well, and the ribbon-cutting ceremony, I thought was really nice. Oh, every...
Yeah, lots of really good feedback from community members that are real connected to the school.
Yeah, I, 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 that was definitely a success, I think just the culmination of completing the building itself, um, is, you know, a big weight off of our shoulders, and then the ribbon-cutting ceremony was, um, a really nice way to celebrate that. Of course, there's always challenges that come along with this time of year, and, um, you know, one of, one of those challenges was really, um, uh, again, explaining to people about, uh, if their position is ground-funded and how grants work. Um, you know, we get a certain allocation with a grant, and it's the same from year to year, so how do we sort out people who are paid on the grant, um, versus people paid in general fund when it comes to, um, board-approved raises every year? Um, so, so that's just a conversation that we've been having, um, and, and I take, uh, responsibility for an email that I sent out that gave everyone the impression that everyone was getting the five percent wage increase, regardless of how they were being paid, um, whether they were ground-funded or general fund. So I believe that we've remedied that, but moving forward, we have a plan in place to ensure that people understand, um, when their gr, position is grant-funded and the grant does not include an annual raise, um, you know, this is, this is what they're getting themselves into when they accept a grant-funded position. And then, of course, uh, we've got some openings that we're nervous, um, about filling for the upcoming school year. Um, but our fingers are crossed that we get some, some people applying for the position, um, who we can bring on board, so...
Okay, any questions for Miriam?
No, good year.
Yeah, now, what's the weather down there?
Don't you dare say dry.
So what's your weather?
Oh, it, it's hot, let me tell ya, it's hot and humid, but, um, eighty-six right now outside, uh, so, yeah. But it, you know, it's, it's Florida, and the kid's new apartment is really nice and has nice, um, tropical shrubbery and a lanai, so...
Good.
And air conditioning.
And you would not need that here, it's a little chilly.
No, no.
And it is certainly overcast and, uh, rain. Yeah, forty-some, yeah. But anyway, enjoy it while you got it, and come back quickly.
Okay.
And hugs and, hugs and kisses to, uh, Little Scoop are...
I will definitely give him lots of hugs and kisses.
Okay.
One for, one for each of you.
Okay, okay. So next, uh, Dan.
Um, so I apologize for sending you guys the extra data points, um, I just didn't have it ready for Tammy to put together the package. Um, so I wanted to pass those out and make sure you saw those, um, the attendance trends, um, that I emailed to you, but I know Tammy also gave you that, that's a lot of information, I'm sure you've read it all, and that, in your head right now, but I wanted to get that data. Um, and then also the behavioral data from the year, um, both of them, I, you know, there's a lot to talk about, I'd like to see a few things about, uh, a couple of pieces, but in general, I'm just excited to have the data. This is the first year since I've been here, had really, really good data, and that comes directly from having a dean in place and having the advocate working with the kids, so it's been really nice to really get some real numbers. The observations are there, the recommendations, the steps that I'll be taking next year as we move forward, in terms of discipline and all of that, and for the behavior, as well as for the attendance piece also. You know, if you wanna dig into it, long story short, attendance has gotten better, and based on altercations, discipline has gotten worse. But I, I think that there's a grain of salt with that, I think a big part of that is that this is the first year since I've been here, that we've actually been recording, and there's a lot of evidence that before I got here, nothing was actually entered or recorded, or actually kept. So I think these numbers are not significantly different from previous years, but we actually have a good system of documentation and follow-up.
Does it seem to be the same offenders?
Um, yeah, and you can even look on the behavioral data, if you look at the observation of the world, um, you know, for example, our top, I, I hate to say offender, that has kind of a justice...
I know, but...
Our, our, our frequent flyer was in the sixth grade, and thirteen out of those, um, total instances was a single young man in the sixth grade. And I like to use the terms egregious and consistent, um, none of his were very egregious, but they were fairly consistent. Um, so it's about every three weeks he was in, in an office or something. But none of them were, were, you know, there were some suspensions involved, but none of them were, were, you know, so over the top. But it, it's nice actually having data that we can move forward with.
I agree.
And some of this as well, you know, if you look at tobacco violations, you know, two years ago, I don't believe that there were no tobac, there was no tobacco on campus. Uh, but if you look at this year, we had thirty-six violations. Um, this is also the first year that we have baby detectors installed in the restrooms. So I, you know, that correlation, because we're actually like, you know? I know, when I was a kid, I, I didn't do it, but there was a lot of smoke. I know, when I was a kid, I didn't do it, but there was a lot of smoke going on in the bathroom. You know, with baby, you don't smell it, but you can detect it with baby detectors. And we did that for sure very successfully. It was, it was really awful there for a while. So anyway, I would invite the, I would invite you all to take time to, you know, peruse this, email me, give me a call, I'd be happy to talk more about it at the next board meeting as well. But it does give, not only this is where we're at, but this is where our plans are for the next year in terms of attendance and behavioral data. I also gave you in your packet the beautiful, I don't know how they printed, a single page of diagram for each one, that was not attended, but I failed to give you the reference point, which I just passed around for you. So I wanted to say that on, in the six through eight, in the nine through twelve, we did not meet our goal for the year. We had high ambitions and our NWEA scores, our growth data, we called for a seventy-five percent show of growth from our students. We ended up in high school at a seventy-two percent and in the junior high at a seventy-four point seven percent. So...
That's not part.
I fell short, but I want to give you the data from last year.
Yeah, okay.
Last year, we had fifty-two percent growth in high school and we had fifty-five percent in the junior high. So going from fifty-two percent to seventy-two percent feels pretty good.
Yep.
Going from fifty-six percent to seventy-five percent feels pretty good as well.
Congratulations.
I feel good about that, although, you know, we are going to get gamed on our random evaluations with the state. You know, I was a little too young, home saying seventy-five percent. We're going to stay at about two percent of points, but I feel like we made some careful games with students in their test level. That feels pretty good.
Yeah, that's really good.
Successes, the master schedule, it was nearly complete. I do want to note that I've had that on this report for two weeks now. And it's still the same, still nearly complete, but it's not done, but it's close. And then on the comments and challenging, challenges, I did, I was able to hire a junior high English teacher, so I'm very excited about that. And apologies to Tanya because it was one of her former parents, so I have robbed her of...
Well, there you go. Caring is sharing.
I'm still looking for a high school English teacher, an art teacher, a kids' teacher, but far better...
Art kind of caught me off guard, I didn't know what was going on.
You guys have any questions?
Again, thank you for the graduation. And again, I, I think all of us have seen the amount of attachment that continues to grow to, from your students to you.
Yeah, they're, well, that's with your kids.
Yes.
Well-attended as well.
Yes. Yeah, and again, their ambitions, when that narrative came up, it, again, I think is elevated from the first year that that was done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it, it's a very good progression.
Yeah, we got, we got a good thing and, you know, like, Miriam and I were talking about this, you know, Miriam and I have a, you know, a five-year plan that we kind of penciled out and we're about two and a half years into that, so I feel pretty good about it all, like what you're talking about, that's, you know, best results. So I think next year's going to be really, really strong.
I'd still like the valedictorians' speech.
And again, for those of you, you know, that, that student, I mean, that student used to sit, you know, in a corner and would not make eye contact. And she had the, had the, and, you know, Marcy knows as well, you know, for her to get up, she gave a four and a half page speech in front of, there were, I guess, two hundred each one, two hundred people there, all of the teachers, the graduating class, and she had...
There were more like three hundred people.
Yeah, and she didn't, she didn't fall for it.
No, she didn't.
She did the whole thing. I mean, you had to be a little quiet to hear it, but it was, it was fabulous.
So could I have a copy of that?
Me too.
Oh, you know, you asked for that, I'll send it to you.
I would too, because I couldn't hear it all.
Okay, yeah, if you do that, the whole materials.
Yep.
So, okay. Okay, Tanya, you're up.
Well, first I'm really sad that I had to miss graduation, sorry about that. For those of you who don't know, I had to skip out, I had to go to Ohio for a memorial service for my stepdad, so I, oh, sorry, feel like I'm behind the eight ball here. You know, Dan's got this great behavioral data and mine is all focused on literacy, mostly because of, we are coming to the end of our half million dollar grant that we got for literacy. And I want to thank you guys for allowing Crescent to intensively work on that for three years. Because the ability to, to focus just on that and not interrupt it with other things and focuses has really made great gains for our kids, it's made great gains for our staff. I was telling Miriam, I have never had something where we received a grant where we got so much out of it.
That's good.
We got preschool able to be on with us. Now with Dan stealing my para, the secondary school is going to be pulling into this training because this para is coming over here with all the training. So that is a beautiful thing and it's, it's just really been a positive for us. So I appreciate you guys letting us focus on that for the amount of time we did. That was huge. On the behavioral things, we have seen a lot of difference also with having a dean. Those things were also with records, it's, it's not to say there were no records, that records were not as easily compiled because they tended to be a sheet of notes somewhere. Because when you don't have a dean who can focus on that and you're still trying to do everything else, that's as far as you get. So, but I see a lot of the same trends, we have some frequent flyers and we, but we have a lot of positive things. Our restorative practices are coming along. We've learned a lot about how the restorative practices and literacy all fit in with new information about how the brain works. Got a lot of trauma-informed care going on, so that's where we are challenged, all the unpredictable weather.
I was going to say the weather's been, like, on all your guys' challenges?
That was, that was a day. That was a day. You know, the, the positive to have a community business come to us and say, we want to do something. We didn't go to them, they came to us. And this was the second year in a row that they bought scooters for second grade. Not only did they buy scooters, but bless his heart, Kirk put every one of those together.
Oh.
So, and then Lori came down, because our second grade teacher is not as mobile right now, Lori came down to walk with the kids, down to get them, they got to ride them back. It was an awesome thing to do and love that the community is coming to us and saying, hey, what can we do?
That is cool.
And there, the reason for the scooters is kids spend time on technology, we want to get them outside. What's something we can do that'll get them outside? So, you guys have any questions?
And hopefully we'll get the skate park and they can ride their scooters on the skate park when they get it fixed. Or they can just ride it to the park now.
I just have a comment and just wanted to thank you for taking advantage of that literacy grant and, and doing the work that you guys did to focus on that because academics to me is, is utmost. I mean, the disciplinary sub and the discipline and the, and behavioral issues and things I know are important too, but the academic aspect of that and literacy in particular, if kids can't read, it's...
Then you get the behavior issue.
Right, so, so thank you for doing that and I, as a parent and a grandparent, appreciate that and the school board member.
Well, I've learned so much that you've put out to parents the lingo, because, you know, as educators, you forget that the parent doesn't know what a vowel means versus a list, you know? And so the fact that, you know, I feel that they, the parents probably need to be exposed to that language more and continue to do those things, that's awesome. But, you know, then they could kind of feel like, oh, I've heard that word before, you know, and that helps because, you know, we have a lot of parents that weren't successful in school, walking through that door, scary.
And what's cool about that is that those are the kinds of language, when we have literacy day and we have the parents come in, that's the kind of stuff we're teaching the parents. This is how, this is what this means, this is how you can help your kiddo.
It's important.
Because how, we've learned that, how we were taught was not necessarily the ways that created a lot of retention. So we've got a lot of things, you know, one of our biggest outtakes on this besides just the fact that we really do need to teach phonics is that even more so phonemic awareness starts in, at birth, so we've got these guys on board for it. But phonemic awareness, what we thought about was abs, word play. We used to think that kind of ended in kindergarten. It doesn't. It, it goes all the way up through high school if they need it to. On top of that, the amount of vocabulary that kids need to be hearing. And what happens when we take science and social studies out of the lower grades is that foundational science and social studies vocabulary they need for fourth grade and sixth grade then is missing. So even if they're teaching it phenomenally in the upper grades, those missing pieces are going to affect that and that's a lot of what we, our big takeaway from this was.
Well, I have to say that when people are asking about the school, I'll tell them that the, the one thing that I find so impressive is our literacy program and Crescent because it's just, and, and we get the information all the time and it's shared, so I, I am, think it could be a model for other schools and for future grants that you guys would be one that you could be the mentors for.
And as you're looking at these, these little pie charts, I, you know, notice again, like, in kindergarten, beginning of the year, we had seventeen students, in the middle of the year, we had eighteen, at the end of the year, we had sixteen. Doesn't even necessarily mean they're the same students. However, when I look at students that were here all year, Miriam, correct me if I'm wrong, was it ninety-eight percent of our kids made growth?
That sounds about right, Tanya.
So, we had like three or four kids that did not make growth. Some of them grew a whole lot more than others, but all the, like, three or four kids made growth, so we're pretty, we're pretty happy with that.
Good job. Thank you.
Other reports.
So, I just wanted you guys to know how good Rody is to live there. I mean, as our university person, he went and he was a part of that Kelly County, the dedication that they have this weekend at the sheriff's office, handed out levels and cards and keys to name connections and community partnerships and he's been all over, he's flying about, so he's done an amazing job. We also got our Buell grant and today was our first day of the summer program and it went really well and everybody was there and he was excited when Kevin was like, "Summer school." He was so excited, that was a good thing. I have, there on the agenda that tonight is, I'm asking for approval to go ahead and submit a waiver for our in-kind. With our program having twenty percent of in-kind, what you have on the board report is just through April, so we still need to include May and June. I think that we're really close, but if we could just submit that waiver just to cover one little bit that we didn't make, and we may make it every year, but it just, it covers us a little bit.
Hey, you're very close.
Yes, we're close. And like I said, we still have to add into the hundred and twenty-eight thousand that we have moving up until the end of April, we still want to mention it to put in there as well.
Yeah.
I have a question, Vivian.
Sure.
What is the circle of security class?
Circle of security is, so Judy Bailey is our new, is the men's health consultant that she works through to pet. It is a parenting class. It just shows, it talks about how important the relationship of a parent is and how building that trust bond with your parents, the parents as a family and how that affects the child as they go through school and back home. Can we have that trust bond there and how that affects and makes them better as a whole person to be able to have that trust to come back to that family member. And then it also, they discuss the effects of when you break that trust and when you break that, that circle of security between the family and...
So it's kind of along the lines of if your kids aren't safe talking about the little things, they can't talk about the big things and...
Goodness, God, for you all, and you have some community members and you have some of our parents. I think that if we start offering more classes like that, we'll have more participation, but this is like a COVID-type sense, COVID that we had in...
I, I thought it was a really cool thing and I bet you there's a lot of entities that would be willing to host that.
And the husband might help a lot with that and we, we had childcare and getting dinner. I think that the more that we can put out there for parents and families and community members, we'll get more responses, we, that individual ones that give the word out.
So are you hearing any rumblings of anyone offering childcare at any...
Childcare?
Yeah.
Childcare, right. I haven't had a lot of, I haven't had a lot of parents ask for it right now, but it doesn't mean that it's not needed.
Yeah, because there's a parent right now of a young, like, ten-year-old, he's not able to work this week because she has some childcare.
And that's a question I have right now, I don't, I don't have anything available.
Is it ever going to go away, Miriam? Well, actually, I'll do a couple. So number one is you sent me a, a DocuSign for the Buell grant, that was from you, not Tammy.
That was actually from Buell.
Okay, and so I have to DocuSign that and get that back to them.
Yes, and that's, that's, that's just your acceptance, acceptance, that you acknowledge that we received the Buell grant in order to run the summer program.
Okay. And maybe they left off a cover page or something, so I just, when I saw that, I just really wasn't sure as to what I was supposed to do with it, so that clears that up. And the childcare piece, before you would go, I have two assessments. And actually, these assessments were created by Rebecca Spiritus, who does the Head Start, early Head Start assessments every five years, and she's done the last two and is very competent. Anyway, these are the assessments that are going to go forward. Community of Caring has had a task force on childcare since 2019 and then it really lost its momentum because COVID came in and it has regained itself, it regained itself because, number one, Community of Caring, when we purchased the, our new building, it came with an additional ten lots, which gives us all that vacant space on Bennett Avenue. And so we actually had a donor who helped us with our capital campaign, who came forward, I believe in February, to let us know that he had seed monies for childcare. And probably about two weeks later, we were made aware of the fact that we could apply for a design lab for workforce childcare. And this comes under Senate Bill 22213, which allocates eight point eight million from the state level and ten million from the federal government to, it's basically for capital with workforce childcare solution implementation. Anyway, we, Community of Caring applied for that and we were eight... eight out of sixteen applicants who were accepted into this design lab. We have finished the first phase of it. But long story short, we are now in an assessment, uh, drive to find the needs, not only internal needs, but external needs of childcare in Southern Tower County with an eye that that grant is due at the end of August. And this is a huge amount of work, but everything is really driven by this tool. So I'm asking you, Desiree, for you to take a look at this and that you would give us feedback by the end of this week. We are hoping to disseminate this after, this is a first draft. We are hoping to disseminate this by, uh, the end of June. Have this completely done. Anyway, and, uh, I would give the rest of you also the same. And I know Connie, uh, that again, you have extensive knowledge in this. And here's this piece. And Donna, I don't know if you'd be interested in here. And that, this is the instructions. I'm sorry to, I'm mixing business here. But it's, in a small community, it's about the only way that you can roll out things. No, they're not. One's an employer survey and one is an employee. But when you say employee, that's really employee slash parent. And we actually had an incident that happened over the weekend, which just kind of tears me apart, where a babysitter came to watch five kids. I don't know any of the particulars, other than the kids, uh, a few of the kids, very young, went into a house, or maybe a couple of them. And they were unoccupied, but the babysitter risks being charged with four counts. And again, um...
Four counts of what?
I, one is...
Neglect.
Neglect. I, I can't remember the other things. But again, um, it shows the seriousness of, uh... Okay, here. So anyway, it's a brave situation, but trust me, there, this is a huge opportunity. I've been, we've been working on this a long, long time. And, uh, it's the first time where I've seen such an opening of money. I don't know if you want to, on any of this. But anyway, uh, if, if you would, uh, give any input on this instrument, this tool, by, uh, Friday, I'd be greatly appreciative. Yeah. And as you can see, I, and it's, uh...
So can I tell parents to go to what website to fill this out?
It, it's on that instruction sheet, I believe. It's as to, yeah, Kaylee. But then if there's any questions or anything that you would like to discuss that doesn't put your name on something, that you need clarifications, et cetera, just give me a call and I'll try to answer these. And obviously, one of the things you'll see that we do have a faith-based organization to help put this instrument together, but it's already been decided that that will be deleted, that it's just going to come in as a Southern Tower County assessment, that it is a collaborative piece. But they're the ones who went forward and paid for Rebecca Spiritus. And so, and then, uh, you know, just a lot of synchronicity to this before they had knowledge of it.
Apparently, that's a spare.
Okay. So anyway, and...
Desi, thank you.
Yeah, and I think anybody has a question, as Desi said, she is on the agenda to, we do need to make a decision in regards to, uh, that proposal. So if there's any questions, to make them now. And that way, this will free you up. Okay? Okay?
Desi, will you let me know in the next? September?
No, what, for policy council?
Yes.
Yes. We haven't set a date yet. We were going to do one in somewhere.
Okay. All right.
I will let you.
All right, thank you. Keep thinking, I don't know.
Okay, so is there anything in regards to other reports? Okay, but then I'm also thinking, we've, we've got you, Marcy, out in the audience. So, Marcy, I, I don't know, I don't want to inconvenience you and I know you have to travel.
Please, Miriam, I have one question.
What?
Um, the CTE report, I thought we eliminated fire science.
We did not.
We did not? I thought somewhere along...
I understand.
Talk to them.
I thought that went away.
I can give you the rundown on that if you want.
Well, I just, I saw it in here and I'm like, wait a minute, wasn't it like last year or two days ago that we were told?
We were worried we were going to have to because of the nature of the budget changes that arise.
Oh, okay.
We were able to break that out with teacher and their student interest. So we have fire science for at least one more year, um, to allow the current...
That's how that money on materials, and I'm like, oh my god.
No, I, we have it at least another year and that gives us a year to add additional funding.
Okay, cool. That's all.
You kept the spark going. Thanks.
Go.
So then, next question. Donna, you brought Marcy to our thing.
Yes, but I have more questions. I have one question.
Okay.
Are we not supposed to have an end-of-year report or a plan for the cell phone policies and such things?
Oh, I think we already did.
That was last time, I thought.
I've never seen it.
I thought it was last time.
Yeah, we had it in the board packet next last, I think it was last, yeah, last month.
Last month. I don't remember seeing it. See, it's a little, what can I say? Okay. Yes, um, I invited Marcy to come.
Okay, so what I'm doing then is having Marcy go in before our executive session.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Desi, you can vote. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Desi. Thanks for your work.
Well, thank you.
Okay, and call me, Desi. Okay, do you have my number?
I think I do. It's one, I did...
Yeah, yeah, ask your mother. Okay. Yes.
All right, so, um, pass out the board report. Um, just a lot, just put together a little bit, just to, um, again, have some celebrations to start with. Like you already talked about Kendall, like that was so exciting. Um, I saw the video of, of her graduation and it's just phenomenal. Like you said, the growth she's had over the years. Her own growth personally, but supported by our parents and, and, uh, and the staff. It's just been amazing to watch her. Um, we also have another student, Connor, um, who we had our transition graduation. He did a social graduation a few years ago. He's going to turn twenty-one next December. So he participated in the graduation. So at our June, uh, he passed Bozey's Board meeting. We'll have some, um, pictures of all of that as well to, to share with the board. But he'll, he'll continue on until December of next year and he'll age out at twenty-one. But he is working two part-time jobs, which can continue. And like I said in the report, they're looking to place him here through our continuation of the swap program and, um, the Division of Occupational Recovery out working with him to get him placed in a position hopefully more locally. So he's done an amazing, been an independent worker, which, you know, if you knew Connor a few years ago, we were wondering if he would, if he had. He has stepped up and been an independent, very thoughtful worker at the Social Aid and also the Woodland, um, Community Building. So we're here for them, yeah. So a few staff, uh, student updates and then staff updates. So students, um, just to give you a little bit on, on special education students. Well, you have forty students here at Crescent and Junior Senior High, that was on the December one count. So some kids have come and gone since then, but around forty students is what we looked at. Um, and there are six students currently placed in Center Based Programs in Woodland Park. And one of those students is returning back in the fall. And, um, Desi just talked about one that's participating in the summer program. Um, she's the one that's returning back. And, uh, there is one student placed downhill in the School of Excellence and another student in a, awaiting a residential replacement unfortunately that lives here. So, um, just a little bit on our students. And please ask some questions if you want to. Um, staff updates for the Bozey's. So we are looking for an assistant special ed director. So just putting that out there into the, into the world. We have that opening until June fifteenth, so come in quickly. Hopefully, um, you know, can find someone soon. Uh, we have had two speech-language pathologists move out of state in our Bozey's. Um, and one of those is Candy Coyle, who serves alongside Melba Dupree. Melba is the SLPA, the assistant, that actually delivers the services daily, um, to our students here in Triple Creek. And then Candy serves as her oversight SLP, speech-language pathologist. And that we are hoping to continue, even though Candy's moving out of state, she'll keep that remote service model, which unfortunately a lot of roles have had to go to, um, to keep speech-language pathologists in place. So we'd rather have someone we know and work with that knows our kid and family. Lernell Stravsky, who is retired twice now from us as an occupational therapist, is for real retiring this time and we have hired a replacement, her name is Amanda Q. Um, and she's excited to join us from Part C Services. So she knows our families through the resource exchange, a little bit as well from El Paso County. We'll continue to use our contractors for those other positions that we have going on, uh, for teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, orientation of mobility, and our school site services as well. A little bit of update on gifted education on the backside there. Um, we applied for the Universal Screaming Grant, still waiting to hear on that, but it's supposed to be fully funded this year. So we added a halftime gifted coordinator to that application. If that's approved, again, it's fully funding it, so it doesn't have any additional cost for any of us. We want to hire a Bozey halftime gifted coordinator. And we talked specifically about having that person do direct services here in Triple Creek. That's what we want from that person, as well as writing the... It's been difficult for people to add on to their existing jobs and stipends to be able to do that work. So Connie did it for you, thank you, and still overseeing a lot of that. Um, and I have our MOU on there, because I know it's an agenda item for you as well. So I don't know if you want me to run into talking about that. Okay. And then, uh, the last thing on there is just meeting with principals. We have twelve principals in our Bozey's. So we're going to meet with, uh, we're working on scheduling some time with Dan and Tanya to just talk about where we are, reflect on this year and identify areas in our, those two focus areas for our Bozey's is really around, again, high-quality instruction for our exceptional students and then the process and procedure, that's just kind of a requirement of our exceptional students, um, and ways to, again, grow from, from where we are now. So we can talk about the MOU. I don't know, Donna, if you want to, you all looked at it already or...
The, the biggie of the MOU and what came up in our last Bozey's Board meeting was that, so we have a student in Manitou Springs and something goes haywire and the parents decide to sue. We've never seen that teacher, we know nothing about that classroom. We don't have prior knowledge really of the student who is responsible for the legal fees. And, and that was a big content, a big conversation. And let me just tell you, the conversation didn't end. It went on a whole different... But, you know, that's a concern, is that we have a memorandum of understanding with the Bozey's, but we don't really have that with Manitou. So if there is a lawsuit that's filed that involves one of our children, who's on the hook for the legal fees? Is it our district or is it Manitou? Because we don't have that, that teacher isn't in our purview. We are not supervising that teacher. And then, you know, it branches off into also with, with the academy, with Mayor Academy in Woodland Park. If they have an issue there and let's say they don't even have a certified or licensed special ed teacher and there's an issue, who's on the hook for that? Is it Bozey's in the, in our school district, has to foot the bill, or something we have nothing to do with? So that's kind of how it all is mushrooming into. And, um, personally, my thing is I don't feel that if this, if we have a staff member that makes a bad decision that isn't our staff member, I don't think all the other districts should be on hook to that. And then I'm shocked.
Yep, yep. Um, so I've done some research since our board meeting, because we're going to come back together kind of through email, hopefully, so that when we meet, our last meeting for the quarter is on June twenty-eighth, or seven, Tuesday night. Um, and it is a virtual meeting, so we're hoping to have a document that we are comfortable with, to move forward with. If not, we'll pass it on and do it till the fall. Um, but I want to make some recommendations of some of the research I've done on it. So I've talked to some other Bozey's and really, the biggest contention that people couldn't really agree on is the placement of students. So that's really where. So if a student is attending a district and if they're a choice student, that district takes on that responsibility when they accept that student as a choice student. So that's the District of Attendance, we'll call it, the District of Attendance, it would be their responsibility. In the event of a placement, which is what our Center Based Programs, those six students we have placed, if that one of their parents decided to file a complaint, then who would pay those legal fees if there was no fault? We have a clause in there about if there's fault, we can ask for a, a, a third-party hearing officer to come in, kind of look at the case and assign some sort of fault assignment or value. Um, CDE might even do that in their complaint findings. If there's, you know, a percentage of fault of the staff member of the District of Attendance, so if we place a student in a Woodland Park Center Based Program and that staff, like you said, did something wrong, then the, who should, who should like bear the cost of that legal fee? Would be the District of Attendance that actually hires that staff member, if that makes sense, right? Um, but what if there's no fault? And we find this all the time, there are lawsuits filed all the time, no one did anything wrong. We are found to be with no fault at all, um, either district. And so who pays those legal fees still? Because still, we've had to pay an attorney. Um, so what I found is everyone that I've talked to, Bozey's directors, they have never dealt with this issue before. Thankfully, it's never come up for us, but now that we said it, watch, it will happen. Um, so we need a plan there for it and we wanted it in our MOU. Um, a lot of folks said it should be just a shared cost then between the District of Residents and the District of Attendance, who's placing the child there. Um, because it is really no one's fault. Should it be a hundred percent anyone's? Um, if it's a hundred percent the District of Attendance or Woodland Park's responsibility, if we went that route, it would, it wouldn't give them any incentive to continue to say, yes, well, take the students from another district and serve our most significant needs students. So fifty-fifty was a recommendation we had from a lot of the other Bozey's directors I've talked to. We have one that actually kind of has this scenario, which is Pike's Peak Bozey's. So they have the School of Excellence. I asked them what they do. They have a really interesting one, because they work with so many districts. They work with all the sixteen El Paso County districts plus, um, their own member districts that are further out east. They have an agreement that if a student's placed at the School of Excellence, each one of those, um, districts may have a different attorney. So the Pike's Peak Bozey's have their attorney. That attorney works with the attorney of the District of Residents, because they have probably a different attorney. They work together to file the complaint together and everybody pays their own legal fee of each of the attorneys. I kind of feel like that's double attorneys. In our case, we use John Stanek as our attorney at the Bozey's level. Most of us use him for our district attorneys. So it would be the same person with one thing, we're the person representing. Um, special education, it's the special ed director working with the attorney. I'd rather work with one attorney instead of two. So my recommendation would be we don't use what Pike's Peak Bozey's does. It sounds like it's going to be double attorney fees that each of the, either the Bozey's and the districts would pay. So that was an interesting one, but it gave me some more information and some more thought to really delve into it. So we're going to be bringing that, um, to the board to be, uh, talking about what we might want to move forward, which I would recommend like that fifty-fifty split if no one's at fault. The legal fees shouldn't be astronomical, again, it's just me working with John. And I try to do as much of the work as I can and just kind of get his approval and not try to rely too much on him, um, and work with the superintendents in each district to hold that some.
What you're saying, Marcy, is the districts that are involved with the students.
But what, what you're saying, Marcy, is the districts that are involved with the students would be paying fees. So if it's Manitou and, and Woodland Park, Triple Creek would be?
Correct, correct. Yes, it would be the students' district of residents that placed them, and the students' district of attendance where they are placed. Just those two districts, yep, that's what I recommend.
Which I'm more comfortable with, because I don't think we should be footing the bill for somebody else's.
That makes sense, that's good.
I think that's fair, too.
At least there's a conversation before.
Yes.
Like you said, it hasn't happened, but.
Yeah. And every time we, we say something is a BOC's fee, the only revenue we have is the special ed funds. And we are you, you are we. So that's what, if we say it's a BOC's fee, it would impact all three districts. And that's where we wanted to be more fair with that, where it only is the districts involved. Um, the only other thing we added to the MOU that we had a discussion about that was not there from before in the recommendation, was just how to compensate, I know everybody talks about when they do the staff increases. How has that been shared kind of at the BOCs level? So what we've added is some language, we didn't have it in writing anywhere. Um, we had language and added language that it would be an average of what the three districts do. So for example, right now, um, I think Manitou decided to do seven, and Woodland Park six, and you guys five. So we did an average, and it's a five point six increase for BOCs staff. So we just take an average of what all three districts do, and then that's what we do for BOCs staff. So we just added that language in, it wasn't in writing anywhere. So those were the big pieces.
That's good. Thank you, Marcy.
Yeah.
Appreciate y'all doing this.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Of course.
So Miriam, do you have any things to weigh in on this, or any questions to ask?
Um, no, I, I feel like um, when no fault is found, that the two districts sharing the cost is completely fair. Um, and I think the district, if fault is found, the District of Attendance um, should be billed for any type of attorney fees or liability costs, so. Um, and, and you know, as far as the wage increase, if, I'm not opposed to them averaging what the three districts are giving, so, no.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Well, thank you very much, drive safely. Yes.
Thank you, Marcy.
Can we see you on Thursday or something? Do we have a retreat on the week?
Okay, so next, I will need a um, motion to go into executive session. Uh, and the writing is on the bottom of the format, and include in that as to uh, who will be in attendance at that executive session. Thank you.
So is it all board members, the two principals, Miriam and Tammy?
I would presume Tammy. Yeah, no, I think, is, does that, does that sound, uh, does that sound okay to you, Miriam?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, then can I have somebody then to go forward with the motion?
I meant that we, that the Board of Education convened into executive session to discuss, is it this one? Twenty four dash six dash four oh two, four G. Consideration of documents protected by the Mand. Mand, non-disclosure provisions of the Colorado Open Act. At this time, all individuals who are not invited must.
Okay, can I have a motion then from a board member to uh, reflect uh, the uh, moving forward with a positive action plan to address the concerns? What she said. Yeah. Just taking, that you moved to go forward to?
Yeah, I moved that we um, go forward with the plan to do some restored justice conversations to address the issues presented.
I'll second it. Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Well.
I.
Okay, so the principals, you are officially dismissed.
Go to recess.
Yeah. Is there any board member that needs a bathroom break? Do you?
Yes, I really need a recess.
Okay, so we'll take five minutes.
Bye, Dan, bye, Tanya.
We'll take five minutes, a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back, Miriam.
Okay, that's enough time for me to drink a beer.
Oh, yeah. Rub it in. Rub it in.
Here, vodka's here.
Okay, we're going back.
Okay.
So the first thing is our old business. So this is uh, second reading of board policies.
I thought we were doing the um, oh no, never mind, sorry, that was.
Okay. So are there any uh, questions on that?
I move that we accept the second reading of board policies provisions. CBA dash CBC qualifications, powers, and responsibilities of superintendent. Now, number two is CBD dash E, superintendent contract template. And three, CCA organizational charts.
Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Schwab?
I.
Okay, the next is to uh, you'd pass BOC's MOU as received by lawyer, as reviewed by lawyer.
Miriam, did Stan, John Stanek have any changes on that, or suggestions on that, or?
Um, no, not beyond what he already shared with us earlier, so no new changes.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'd like a motion, giving the permission to vote for that, I wish.
To what?
Giving permission to vote for that at our BOCs meeting.
Okay, a motion?
I'll make a motion, Dawn, I can vote on that at our BOCs meeting.
Yeah, I think that MOU, we're still working on it, right? So are we ready to adopt it or not?
Yeah, I think like the, the biggie was who was paying the lawyer? And that's pretty much what we got here without telling them.
Okay.
Okay, then a sec.
If you all want to wait to actually see the final product with the new language in it, um, I don't know what she gave you, if it has the new language or not, I'm sorry.
She didn't give them any of it to us.
No.
Oh, okay.
What's your recommendation?
Um, my suggestion is that we table it until the MOU is, is, the final draft is presented to us.
Okay, may I have that motion then, please?
I'll move that we table the, you pass BOC's MOU until we get the final copy.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Schwab?
I.
Okay. Next. Under new business is um, the consent agenda.
First, social studies?
Okay. Yes, you're right. So approval, the acceptance of the social studies curriculum for Crescent Elementary. So moved. Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
You give them the other.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Schwab?
I.
Okay, next is a consent agenda.
Oh, I was gonna give them the pen.
Any questions, deletions?
No, but I did want to make.
Did it last?
No, because I had on these minutes. I know, we did it, I thought we did something.
Two months?
I swear to God.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Schwab?
I.
Okay, the next is approval of the head start, early head start in kind waiver.
I make a motion to approve that waiver.
Second. Roll call.
You?
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Schwab?
I.
Okay, next is approval of new workers' compensation insurance provider and proposed premium.
All right, so our provider did not provide a quote. I'm thinking it's because we've had too many claims this year, for as small as we are. Um, and we've had a couple people that had two or, two or three incidents this year. So um, she said the, the uh, providers that did respond are providers on the bottom. That was our premium at twenty-nine thousand three fifty-seven this last year. The other four providers, um, I looked, I looked up their ratings, uh, financial ratings on, on, on the, you know, different financial sites, and they're all rated right around the same. I looked up reviews on them, and uh, the one on top, the Security National, had horrible reviews, and so it made me very, very leery. Um, it was from both the employee and the employer side, it wasn't just one-sided, so it made me very leery. So I reached back after her, and she said, she said, yes, they have the lowest premium, but no, we don't have good recommendations. So I, I was hoping that Pinnacle Insurance would get back with her about our being able to use Gorman Medical, and they would not respond. And, but the other three, uh, so First Dakota, Indemnity, Copper Point, and Security National, they did get back and say, yes, we could use Gorman Medical as a local provider. I hate the fact that our people have to drive an hour before they can get seen by a workman's comp provider. I just, I hate that, and that's what stops me with Pinnacle. So my recommendation to you is First Dakota and Indemnity Company, the, the premium is almost the same. They have high ratings, um, our, our, our representative, representative, she recommended them. That's the one she recommended off the top, um, before I didn't even, all my researcher, asked her any questions. Um, so that, that would be my recommendation, but then Pinnacle is also right there. You know, they were good service, I just hate the fact that everybody had to drive down the springs to see them.
I think that saves us the money in the long run, or just the time and everything in a beautiful way.
Yeah, it, it's horrible. You know, we had one employee that, you know, would have to drive, she had to take the day off. It would take her a half a day to drive down and then drive back.
So the other thing you need to know, though, is, is um, Gorman has their pain management office on the east side of the springs. So that, if that became part of an issue in the claim, that's gonna be a whole thing, too.
But they don't necessarily have to stay with them, they can just go there and get it, and be assessed.
Yeah, and the thing is, is if they get hurt here, and you can go across the street.
Correct, and that's what I.
All right, so can I make a motion to go with First Dakota, Indemnity Company for workman's comp?
I'll second it. Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
Yes.
Schwab?
I.
Okay, next is um, approval of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four insurance renewal with CSD.
SIT-SIP.
SIT-SIP, yeah.
So our new premium with the addition of the CTE building, it did go up. And the fact that um, we have uh, we're expanding the construction trades, and so they're covering them. We have the culinary, all those programs, fire sciences, did increase. So our premium is now going up to a hundred and eleven thousand. But that is everything, the whole under, that, so that's our equipment, that's our property, that's our liability, that is our autos, um, they include their cy, our cyber liability. And whoever has questions, you can ask Merrill, because I'll look out with my old man head. Uh, environment protect premises, I, that's all included. I have no complaints about SIT-SIP. They have been so helpful, very responsive, no issues, you know, dealing with payments for any claims or any.
I have a question, though.
Yes.
I was looking at some of their values on some of these things. When's the last time they actually had somebody come and help?
Now, those are the placement values when we place them on our policy.
I understand. I would be willing to bet that you can't replace Crescent for fifteen hundred dollars.
No, and they know that.
Okay.
They do know that, but that's just what our cost. So like the CTE building, when they're in there, and what we paid for construction.
Okay.
But our policy, cost per replacement cost. So if something happens to Crescent, a tornado does hit down and picks the school up and throws it over the other side of the mountain.
Happened in CTE.
Yeah. So, you know, if it happens, then they will.
Yeah.
Up to our.
And some of them seem kind of out of whack, like fifty-six thousand dollars for the dugouts.
I wasn't around when those.
I know, but it just seems kind of, some of them just kind of.
They are literally dug out, that excavation could have been expensive.
And then the kids' rock clubhouse probably should be changed to the adult.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, thanks, Dawn.
We still have the building, it hasn't been sold, it's still sitting up there.
Okay.
But I kind of wanted just to leave it on there, it, because it's, the new greenhouse isn't part of CTE. Look at actual, changeover happens.
But i- i- is the other one currently up for sale?
Well, I thought, last I knew, Miriam, the city of Inver was looking into it.
That's what I thought, I thought the farm.
Okay, so I.
I didn't track.
I'll track that down, about the greenhouse being for sale.
If not, I'd like to look at it.
Me, too.
And we would, too.
Park integration.
Okay. Okay.
Donkey Hook Prince at all.
Okay. Okay, motion, please. I need a motion on SIT-SIP.
To approve, uh, I moved that we approved the twenty-three, twenty-four insurance renewal with CSDSIP.
I'll second it. Okay, roll call.
You?
I.
Brazil?
I.
Conley?
I.
Dodger?
I.
Schwab?
I.
Okay, next is payroll, uh, and payables.
I'll make a motion.
Wait, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I actually did involve this.
I'm glad.
So I had a question on cell phones. Isn't everybody on like a group plan?
Not necessarily. Some of the, some of our individuals did not, like Annie, she did not want to get a separate phone. Rick was the same way, he has all of his babies and all of his contacts in his phone. So we had agreed, and reimbursing them fifty dollars is cheaper than putting them on the phone.
There was one in here for Beba for two hundred and fifty bucks.
Oh, that wasn't just cell phone.
That's the line item. It's just.
It says cellphone. Line item says Beba, layer lease cellphone, two hundred and fifty dollars. I almost fainted.
Yeah, no, that's not just his cell phone. That's expense reimbursement, mileage reimbursement. So he has to drive down to pick up a bus and come back, and he puts it to be reimbursed, too.
Okay. Must be a pretty good cell phone.
That was her abbreviation, and it should have been.
Okay.
All right, a motion, then, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the May twenty-twenty-three payables payroll.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, next is board meeting posting places resolution.
Beautiful. I make a motion to accept the postings of the regular meeting dates.
Okay, second. Okay, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Yes.
Schwab?
Aye.
Next is approval of recurring monthly payments.
That was Black Hills and all those people?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve authorization to pay out these lists of reoccurring invoices.
Okay, second it. Roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye. Okay, next, approval of board meeting dates.
Beautiful. I make a motion to approve the Board of Education regular meeting dates as posted for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second it. Okay, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Oh, aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, next is approval of board meeting, no, approval of May twenty-twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three payment request. Snyder Electric upgrades construction.
They are moving along with our project, so I just need the next payment approved.
So moved. Forty-seven thousand seventy.
Yes.
So it's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Next is the twenty-three, twenty-four budget adoption resolution. Twenty-twenty-three dash zero five.
Oh, resolution.
So moved.
Yes, I'll second it. Okay, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, the next is approval of twenty-twenty-three coordinated election, M O U for Tower County. Approval of eliminating, or what?
I have a question on this.
Yeah. Aye.
No, I, that would be one little bit of discussion.
I disapproval.
Do we want, well, that's just it. That's why I want the discussion. Do we wanna keep the city limits? Because that's what both of these elected officials are, they're both within the city limit. Now, the cities aren't necessarily the same, but the rest of the counties are at large, so they can be from anywhere in our district.
Yeah, but not all one place.
Or not change, number one.
I, we've not discussed this before, so I don't think we should be having a vote on this particular item. Number two, I think it should not be changed because you could very easily end up in a couple of years with a board that nobody has their fingers in the cities to get the feeling of what's going on in that community. Because, for example, with this upcoming conversation about, you know, taxes or mills, the bulk of the five-hundred-thousand-dollar and above homes are that way. And, you know, so if you ended up with all of your board members are all that way, you don't have anybody looking out for the guys in town.
I, no, I'm just, that's why I wanted to discuss this.
It's really important that, that.
Oh, you might still.
Well, at least to table it and discuss it next time.
No, I have to, I, we can't, I have to provide something to the county by July twenty.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not for.
We don't have to change them. That's why I wanted, it just has to be done. But it's on there. I wanted you guys to know that.
So does somebody have to make a motion, and then we go, no, 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 or I say no?
Well, we'll make a motion to have an election for a coordinated election with Tower County. Tower County.
That's fine.
Not to include changes in districts.
Okay.
Because we have the cripple city of Cripple Creek and the city of Inver. Everybody is at large.
The other thing we need to be cognizant of is if that annexation continues over here off Seastreet, that will move the city limit for Cripple Creek three miles that way, which is going to pull in this side of Cripple Creek Ranches and this side of Cripple Creek Mountain State. Just so you know, it's coming. There's also an annexation conversation in process up on Gold Hill, which they could also extend that boundary three miles out towards Victor. So I'm watching those. I'm going to council meetings to see what's going on.
So the feeling of the board, as I understand it from past conversations, is that Victor and Cripple Creek need representation. And that is identified to those two cities and their boundaries.
Yes.
And those are the two seats that are coming up. And so what I understand is that there is no discussion at this point to make a change in that.
Right.
That there, again, is this value system to keep them. Yeah, keep them represented. So it's basically.
We don't, we don't need to, we don't need to vote on the change in.
Eliminating district boundaries? No, taken representation.
No change, no change in eliminating districts. We just need to opt into the coordination to the election and designate an election official.
The language, then, I think threw us off. Approval of eliminating districts.
Yes.
So that should be, that's not in the motion.
No.
So we want a motion that approves a coordinated election, M O U with Tower County, and the designation of election official.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and not that second point.
Well, don't we keep the districts as is?
Yes. So I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve opting into the twenty-twenty-three coordinated election with M O U with Tower County and designate an election official for that.
And, and you, do you want me to be that? Does it need an election?
Yes.
Well, that's, I have in the last three years, so.
Yeah, we don't need a change.
She's good at it.
And. Yeah, and are you willing to do it?
Oh, I'm happy to do it. I know how to do it, so.
Okay, yeah, otherwise.
It's easy just to do it.
Yeah. Okay, so I've got the motion.
Second.
I'll second. Okay, go for it. Okay, then, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil? Conley?
Yeah, aye.
Dodger?
Yes.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, the next is Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero six, authorization for additional local revenue.
Now, this just, right now, I just want you to move it forward. We can fix the wording later to say mill levy or hill tax, but this authorizes the district to go forward with requesting additional revenue.
For requesting. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero six, authorization for addition, for, for additional.
Local.
Local revenues. I'll second it. Okay, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, the next is approval to renew certificate of deposit for scholarship fund.
Now, we've got about three thousand dollars sitting in the C C D Education Scholarship Fund at Vectra, and they're increasing their rate to five percent. I, I just, it's renewing, and I wanna jump on that, but I need approval.
Well, that's nice.
We have six hundred dollars sitting in the checking, and I would like to pull out what the, and take it down to the minimum and put that in there, too, so it's earning something, and then just sitting there. So if you guys could approve that, that's what my idea is.
Want those as two separate things?
No, they don't need one.
Okay, I would make the motion to approve renewing the C D for the scholarship fund.
Second it.
Okay, roll call.
Bill?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, next is update, informational items, update on.
Are we gonna go, okay, sorry.
We already did the post.
We already did the post. Okay, update on construction trades building.
Any other updates, Miriam?
It's done. We had our final inspection and, um, gosh, hold on, let me see if I can find the email. Okay.
Okay.
I saw that she had the C O C report.
Yeah.
Okay, next, board attended events.
I'm going nowhere with you guys.
Are you guys gonna be attending anything in the next couple of months?
I don't think so. The only thing is Wednesday night, Wednesday night council meeting, I would like any kind of an attendance to support Parks and Recreation Action Plan for our Recreation Needs Study. And that's at council five-thirty, so, yes, if any of you guys can be there, I would love you to be there. Day after tomorrow.
You won't be making any decisions?
No decisions, but we could be there.
Yeah, be there for it, okay.
Okay, and then there's Cookie Ringo passed away. And her services are the sixteenth.
Where did you see that?
And it's at like eleven o'clock at Mount Pisgah, and then reception following at the Elks Celebration of Life. The sixteenth, it's a Friday.
I know, but what's the name?
Eleven o'clock, Mount Pisgah, and then a celebration of life at the Elks Club after Mount Pisgah.
Yeah, there's just a lot of events coming up in the next month or so, and kind of anticipation of that.
Actually, I have the services at the cemetery at ten.
Oh, ten, okay. And Georgia.
Just because we may have, having conversations, need to have conversations about, I'm gonna tie everything I can to as many public events in town as we can. So, let's do that, too, because we all kind of live in different circles, just because people need to be able to approach us.
Yeah, I will, I will be having a booth at the school, Rush Days or whatever.
Yes.
Um, I, someone would help me out, and we could do a booth at Donkey Green Days.
Hey, we know.
And we could, we could even do, you know, I could do a booth at the fair. I didn't get a lot of response for, for, you know, sales of any athletic stuff, or, I mean, we make about a hundred dollars. I had a few people ask about jobs, but we were there. That was kind of an undertaking because it was all me. That was a lot, and so I can't, I can't commit to that unless somebody else commits to it.
Okay, so maybe.
Are there any other events you guys would like to attend?
Well, you know, it would be a really good idea, because the different college associations will have their annual meetings now, starting in June. They go through.
Okay.
And that's a really good way to get that close one-on-one conversation going, so that, you know, because there's a lot of people that aren't connected to the school, that they're gonna be talking about the taxes, and they're talking about.
So I, I think that that's going to be kind of a planned endeavor, so as you can remember, when we had the ribbon cutting, I, Miriam got quite a bit of feedback from people as to what they thought we should do. I, the other piece is that there were many who said that they were willing to serve on a committee or to take in help in this initiative, but I, I think. I think instead of trying to move it down the road under information, that I would rather take and say we all, you know, have a board retreat and figure this out as to our strategic planning, rather than to piecemeal it. So I would like that to be talked about when we do our next meeting, under that piece, if that's okay.
Yeah, it's just, you know, these, like, the annual meetings happen early in summer.
Yeah.
You don't wanna miss them.
No, I think you're, you're absolutely right, that it's a whole lot easier to take and piggyback on established meetings with people already gathered for something else, and to take, be opportunistic to share your gospel for the school.
Four Mile Fire had their big meeting last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah. But we're not there yet, so, I mean, we haven't chosen.
It's a matter of having your face up there.
Yeah, okay, so I think we've covered that. I think the next is the EZ survey.
Miriam was looking up the email for the.
Okay.
Um, so we are going to table the EZ survey data. Dan informed me that it was just the responses from the junior, senior high school, so I'd like to table that until we have the responses from everyone to share.
Okay, that's good.
And then on the building, I just wanted you all to know that the state inspector will be there tomorrow, and so we should have our certificate of occupancy in hand shortly after that. And the excavator came back out just to do some touch-up groundwork and added some rock to the downspouts for better drainage, but other than that, the building is done, just the final inspection tomorrow.
Cool. Party, party. Okay, and then the next, and you said table the EZ?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then the last one is the innovation status. Do you want to table that also?
Um, well, I just included some information in your board packet so that you have a better understanding. Really, innovation, and I don't know if you all have any questions, but innovation status, it doesn't necessarily change what we can and cannot do in our school district because we are so small. We're not dealing with unions. We're not dealing with a large district that kind of has, from the top down, directives to schools that would give us anonymity. It's more so the idea of would it make our school district be perceived stronger, better if we applied for innovation status, but it doesn't necessarily change too much how we do things already.
And I think that that down the road, this might be something that we look at at a board retreat where we can.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Have a little overview.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and we have some intelligence around it, so, I mean, again, I think this is pretty exciting, and.
Yeah.
But I, I think right now.
So take some time to read through the information that I shared with you all, and then we will dig a little bit deeper at a retreat.
Okay, perfect, because that's what I was like, could somebody just kind of give me a nice summary?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So then the next, then, is that we need to have a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters, C R S, whatever that thing is, dash twenty-four, dash four zero two, parentheses, four B.
I'll second it.
Okay, you need to say who's gonna be present.
Oh, and present will be.
Miriam and Tammy.
Miriam and Tammy.
And the board.
And the board, okay.
Did I get it?